Is now. While we're waiting just a few more minutes to see if anybody else comes, there's going to be a QR code on the screens. If you take your phone out, it's going to be an interactive, active meeting. And you can scan your phone to it and you can join in on the discussion through the slideshows as well.
We'll give everybody a few more minutes to come in. We need to schedule this to start just five thirty, so we won't start until then, so. Oh, that's all we rode with from the, from that meeting. Your daughter and him, right?
Yeah.
Come pick yourself. Over there, but when we would be, um, deliberate. And when we left Mike there, there was. Has he won yet? That boy has the most. Yeah. Why don't you wait till after loving to my enemies play off? That's the one that worries me. After the radio season.
So you want me to take off?
Let's take it off. Superstitions. I'm superstitious now. I like that someone to jinx.
You'll just have to remind me because I will not remember.
Boy in the state championship.
I mean, to be fair, yes.
Alright, everybody, we've got five thirty and I know we've got a really good crowd. And I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and then like Sarah and Chris, Christie have they have a, a presentation that'll be on these two screens here. And then it was on your phone as well, is that right?
If they scan that QR code like I just did, it'll bring up the presentation and it is interactive.
So we'll do the presentation first and as we go through those slides and if you have a question about something on the slide, then, then feel free to raise your hand and, and we'll, we'll call on you from there. Does that sound okay? Alright, appreciate everybody being here. It's a really good turnout and, and I know you got some concerns about the, the senior citizen center. That's, that's located on the industrial highway and, and anyway, we will, we'll help with to address all those concerns for you. So.
Yes.
Let's start with the presentation and then we'll kind of just go throughout it. Does that sound fair?
Yep. So Christine is going to bring up the next slide. I wanted to let everybody know that we had a public works committee meeting a few weeks ago and it was suggested that we had a public forum to talk about the needs and the concerns with the senior centered. I think that there is a rumor out there that we're wanting to shut it down and I just want to let everybody know that is not what we're trying to do. What we're trying to do is get the community to help us keep it going. And that is what this meeting is about is ask for the community's help and see what we can do to keep the, uh, the senior centers going and what we can do to help keep it successful. So we will start our presentation. So the first question is, do you use the Portales Senior Center? And if you have it pulled up on your phone, this is where you can answer it. And as you can see, it's an interactive, so it's showing live feed on who said they use it and who said they do not. We'll give it a few more minutes to see if anybody else answers on it.
Sarah, could they possibly do this later on during the day or tomorrow?
No, once the meeting is over, it will be over. Yeah. Okay, Chris, can you go to the next slide please?
Let's, let's, let's get, let's get that. And then there's, how many people don't have a phone out there? That's not logged in, so I'm not logged in. So, so with that question being posed, how many of you folks that don't have a phone but didn't log in, use the community, the service, the senior citizens? Y'all use it every day that it's open? But you do, you do utilize them, so. Can you hold your hands up a little bit longer, the ones that don't have phones? If you have a phone.
Could you give your microphones over to your?
It doesn't speak over the speaker, it's just me. That's end of the recording. I'll talk a little louder. So anybody that, that, that doesn't have a phone that didn't vote, please hold your hand up. I can't hold my hand if I don't use it, even though I'm a senior. Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Next slide.
What programs do you enjoy at the Portales Senior Center? And you guys can answer in the audience and I can write it down.
Raise your hand if you want to answer first. Yes, ma'am.
I love the meals out there.
The meals, okay. Yes, ma'am.
The exercise program.
Exercise program? Exercise program? I got some, it's not there, yes, sir. The meals and the dances, yes, ma'am.
We don't have really much out there like we used to. We know it's a part of the community, but I mean, things have been taken out. We can't even get a bus out, but we've got a bus. Get out there. We can work, huh? There used to be, I don't know, we could, we could use, apparently there's nothing without them. Yeah, but there used to be one that was out there for us, you know, just for ourselves and they have.
How long ago was that? Years. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not aware. I've been mayor six years. I've been mayor six years now and I didn't know and I, and I have, I did not know. I did not know that there was. I have, I went out there today as a matter of fact. And the only ones out there, when I went out there were, I went out yesterday, I'm plugged in. Only ones out there were the pet, uh, operators. The, the rest of, there wasn't anybody else in the facility. True. Okay, yes, ma'am. Bridge every Tuesday. So bridge, exercise, meals, dances, what else? Meals on Thursday, is that the potluck Thursday? I'll be into that for a time or two and that's pretty good food line, but y'all do it every Thursday. Great.
Yes.
We have a library that we've tried to organize a little bit better and have had donations of books. And we use that a lot. A lot of us use the library.
Okay. Any other activities that you do out there? I, I know when I was out there, I mean, there's a, a couple pool tables and then there's a, uh, one room had set up where you had some puzzles that were, uh, looked like some digs off puzzles. And, and those activities, I mean, the kitchen. Say again?
Well seen.
Oh, something, yes, yes, okay. So those, those activities like that, that like bridge and, and, and dominoes that they don't do anymore. I mean, those are some of the activities that you feel like with a director, maybe that they could kind of set some of those programs back into place and, and something like that. I know, we don't do bingo anywhere in town. Go to Globus play bingo, cool. And pool pads. Is there three out there or two? Yeah, they used to. I mean, it's the same thing, you know, we used to, uh, have easier access, yes. They don't have a director hired, the, the, they don't have a director hired for the city. We don't have the funding available. Simply, simply funding, it's simply funding. We have a budgeted amount that pays the utility bills and the. We could probably apply for a grant. We have not and, and hopefully, sure, but hopefully through this information, then that'll open something up that we can, then, then we can apply for that. Does that make, you know, that, that's what we can do now, I mean.
Funding went because it was there at one time.
We have not looked into that, that I'm aware of.
Figure out where the funding went because it was apparently there.
That's right. That's a good point. So we need to find out if, if the, if it was a state grant that was like a, you know, annual grant that just came into us, that it went away at the state level and then, you know, maybe we drop the ball on continuing to find other grants, but, but we can look for other grants. Yes, ma'am.
On some of the elections, there's bond issues on senior citizens. Is that not funded for, is that only for the rural senior citizens or that?
It depends on the language, on, on the language of that. And I'm, I just can't say that I'm familiar with exactly what the language is in there. But I, I know what you're talking about when you see those bond, you know, those bond issues and, and those votes that we vote to approve, a tax increase on that bond for senior citizens now, whether it's specifically for the senior citizen center, a van or, you know, meals or whatever it is, but, but that's a good point that we need to educate ourselves on what that, on what that is, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Years ago.
It's okay. You go first and then the lady behind you. It's okay. You're fine.
Um, years ago, we did our very good director at the gym, good. Very good. And he retired. And then they replaced him with another director and moved the pack system out there. And then she apparently was terminated and that is when they did not replace the director.
That was the last director you had.
That was the last one. And we need a director. You cannot run any facility that's volunteers. We need somebody. We need a director that has the background and how to operate senior citizens and how to do the program.
Yes, ma'am. We hear, we hear you on that. We hear you on that and we're going to do some looking into finding out how we can arrange for funding on that. It's the lady behind you, Bruce.
If they would bring somebody in for the art class, I would join in.
Yeah, that's good. And that's something that we can look at, uh, with, with that suggestion, maybe, you know, Eastern New Mexico University has a fantastic art program. Maybe it's something that we can collaborate with, with the university and, and, and do something that way. These are, these are ideas and things that we hear from y'all that we need to hear, that we hadn't heard of. And, and so that's why we wanted to have this little town hall to get some of these ideas. We, we're not mind readers and we don't go, you know, we just can't, you know, we don't go out there as often as we should. So, I mean, it's something we want to, we want to help you with. Yes, ma'am.
I used to be president of July as their art unit in the palace. There were years I was the, uh, head of the arts department out of the care for several years. I tried to get the former person to, to let me have some, uh, art workshops out there. And I was denied. I really think that the only way we can get an art program back is to get people to come in and willing to share what they have and get people interested. You know, sometimes it's not any more than just like these, uh, uh, these, well, there's these paint, wine and paint programs, you know, that, that have a different love and love and whatnot. We don't want the wine necessarily, but if you can do something, you can interpret that and then advertise that, I think.
And I, I agree with you, but I also think that's, that's not our responsibility as a city. That, that's y'all's responsibility as members of the, of that to help, to help us, to help us help you get those, make those connections and, and with those different things. Yes, sir. That's right. That's right. I, I, I think, you know, what we're hearing and what I'm believing and what's coming out of the whole deal from the get-go is finding a director.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Want to be on the board out there for like ten years now. And our problem is seem to have been. We've asked some people to come up with some really good ideas and things that would really work. But we always say, well, you'll have to go through the city. Well, we've had a hard time going through the city, I'll be honest with you. We tried, but we haven't. It hasn't worked good.
Okay. Well, and, and I respect that and I understand that and I'm, again, I'm, and I'm not making any excuses for the city at all. It's just something that we weren't, we're not up to speed on and we're not informed on. And, and that's why, again, we're trying to educate ourselves here tonight so we can be more, we can be more helpful and, and reach out to everyone a little bit better.
There's a lot of things that we aren't up to speed on either, um, too.
And that's hard, you know, I mean, it's hard and we talk about communication now, how people don't communicate or how they, they, how they get their information. You know, we get so much off of social media now because we don't have our little newspaper that we used to have five or six days a week. Well, and, and everyone of y'all guarantee you had a, had a subscription to that newspaper. You know, and that's where we got our news. Or the, the local TV channel. We don't even have a local TV channel that covers anything in New Mexico, you know? But so, so those are some challenges that we just have to, to learn to deal with. And, and the challenge that we've had and we're hearing is that this town hall will hopefully give us some information from you guys about what we can do to help and, and ma- and make that a better, uh, stronger senior citizen center. And we want to, we want to help you. We're not closing the thing down. We're not turning it into some other facility. Just a minute. Yes, ma'am.
I think right before COVID hit, they were trying to decide what kind of floor they were going to put in for the dancers and for the exercise people. So I think they had funding to do that at that time. I have complained for over a year to get back street fixed because the leather on my car went out. I spent about $2,000 and she knows about it.
I do know about it.
Not done.
When you say street fix, what street? Right in front of the building?
Right in.
The road.
Come right in.
The big pothole that's right, the big pothole that's right there on the.
And absolutely, I thought I was shot.
That's just coming.
Cause my car just exploded like that when I hit that thing. I've complained about it. It's not been fixed for over a year.
We'll get with the county, is county share responsible?
County's vote.
Industrial road. There's only three in that pothole. You had a question? I don't disagree.
Well, I come out there. I, I, I would suggest that as an individual thing, I go out there and I, I, she's good cook. I like to go, I ain't gaining no weight, but I still go out there and I enjoy it.
I don't dance. I had a hand back there. Yes, ma'am. Why the maintenance is not kept up?
We had one year, we had water that was coming doing ceiling and using air for functions and trying to control that and it's just been running down and the whole.
Coming through, coming through after a rain or was it a leaky pot?
It was four.
Okay, I think we was.
Yes.
The roof, the roof been repicked now?
Yeah, in 2014. In 2014, it was repaired.
Wait, wait a minute, wait, let's not talk over each other. So we're talking about the roof and, and when it was leaking and we repaired it in 2014 was the last time?
Yep.
Has there been leaks in there since then? Okay. Right. We took forever to get that re-roofed and then it's taking forever to get some of the damage, some of the rain damage that's on the wall. We, Kelly showed me that the other day. And then also some issues with the floor that's out there too. So anyways, what's our next slide?
Do you know what it takes to be a member with the Portales Senior Center? Uh, what we're being told is there is no membership. There is no membership form, but there are people that go. So there's, there's physical membership, but there's no legal documentation to show that. And so that.
Is, is there not a forum on the podium? Did I see a forum? It said you want to be a member of that?
It's a sign in sheet there. It's not a.
Membership forum.
Well, we were told it's just a sign in sheet.
No, there's a signature form and we made copies and we had about forty-five people that filled them out for us.
Kelly and I were there yesterday, so that may have been something that they have brought, brought on. But yeah, there was a sign in sheet there. There was a sign in sheet there on the podium. And then right beside the sign in sheet, there was a forum, would you like to be a member of the Portales Senior Citizens? That forum is there now. It's, it's available to them now. And you said forty-five have turned their forms to back in?
I'm pretty sure that was the number we got that first day that we did them. I don't know how many they accumulated since.
Good. Who's keeping up with those? Do we have a board? I'm sorry, do we have a board now? You said you were a board for a number of years still on the board. Who's all board members? One, two, three, four, five board members? Six board members that are present? Good. And how often do y'all have board meetings?
Well, we haven't had them on record based for the last couple of years. But.
Well, I think, I think, uh, what I'm getting at is next time you organize, reorganize a little bit and then have another board meeting, invite some of the council and we can come and participate in that board meeting. Does that sound fair? But that's again, that's something that you guys got to take the reins on too.
And we do have a lot of membership registration on file in our office. About forty-five, she's talking about.
That's a minimal number. Sure.
That was the first day.
But the biggest thing, yeah, the biggest thing is the participation, you know, I mean, you can have a hundred and fifty members, but if you only got five or six coming, then that doesn't do much good either. You know, and it's nice to have that facility for that five or six that come every time. And then to have it available for the next forty-five or fifty that come to the dance on Saturday night or Friday night. Y'all do on Friday night or Saturday? I'm in bed by the time you all get in. Yes, ma'am. Something you're taking into consideration.
I wrote down.
Got about the bus, right behind.
Yes, I was just going to say that there's forty-four was that last, the last time we had it ever.
Okay.
And there has been so many complaints about the floor out there. Back when we first started going twenty years ago, there was like a hundred people.
Yeah.
And it went low down and mainly because of the floor and the upkeep down there. We have ceiling tiles falling down.
Mike, you got a question?
I do. I, I'm not familiar with, uh, that works senior deal, but is that something that is donated by the senior?
So in two thousand and eight, there was a grant that was done to build the building, uh, it was aging and long-term grant is what we're finding out. We're still finding information. We asked the seniors for some information. Unfortunately, they don't have it, um, because of changeover, but we are trying to get through our records to find out what we have. But there was a grant that built the building into, or renovated the building, I'm sorry, in two thousand and eight.
It belongs to the city?
It belongs to the city, yes.
And can that, is there any method by which donations can be made to the senior citizens?
It would have to be established through the seniors board and they would have to have a nonprofit organization established, which they told us they do not. But they could do fundraising and things like that. And that's kind of part of what we're trying to establish here, what options we could do from the community to the center.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the most important is get somewhere to, I think the community would gladly kick in some funds if there was a, a smooth process to do so.
Yes.
Did you need a new floor? I understand they needed fire.
Fire alarm system and we'll go over that in a couple of slides from now. Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Sure.
Well, we were told, um, when we met with Ms. Sandra and Ms. Rita, that there were, you guys were not, there was no paperwork to show that you were.
We are.
Okay. Well, I was told the otherwise. I apologize if I got that wrong.
We can get that information easy. It's not argumentative. It's just, you know, we just need to know that information. Because it does make that, it does make that fundraising, it makes that fundraising a lot easier. Sure.
That'd be great.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
In, uh, they was rolling this year in, uh, two thousand and twenty-two and it panics. And it was twenty-four maybe, twenty-four maybe.
So that would have been. Cause the senior board has to apply for it through aging and long-term. That's not something the city can apply for. You, the commu- the senior membership has to apply for it. We're just the fiscal agent. We just help make the funds, get the funds distributed. So it has to be done by the senior board to apply for those grants through aging and long-term. That I'm not sure how it worked before.
Something we need to find out.
Yes.
So do you want to address that question of who funds the senior citizen center there?
So the.
Funding that we have.
So Portales has twenty-five thousand set aside for ability maintenance and utilities and the rest is funded through grant funding, which is mostly aging and long-term for what we can find where it was funded through.
They have to apply.
Yes, they have to apply.
Their board has to apply.
Yes. And I know Joe is.
That's probably an education thing. Yes, ma'am.
That's why we need a director. You look at it volunteers or board, doesn't currently need the professionals and then business. We need a director. And, and they keep talking about a bus. We did have a bus, you know, senior citizens. But when we, uh, the pack system moved out there, the city gave the bus that belonged to the senior citizens to the pack system. We had a rental of computers for the senior citizens. I get that to the pack system for the drivers to use during downtime. We have lost a lot because we don't have a good director. But we had that one that was not there. And then it just, you didn't replace.
That's what it's coming back down to. What's the next question?
Do you like the location of the Portales Senior Center?
That's a yes. That's fifty-fifty on that seventy-five. Yeah, you're here. That's right. But, you know, understandably so, understandably so the location of the, of, you know, being a little bit west of town and not, not generally, you know, closer to in town, it's a legitimate question. I don't like driving out there. Next question.
What are your expectations for the Portales Senior Center? Flooring, director, bus, I'm hearing these things.
Director, yes. Yeah, that's what I'm hearing first, director.
Yeah.
Flooring improvements.
Because what I'm hearing is that they have, you guys are saying they, when the city owns it, that they should apply, they don't know how to apply without a director, but there's just been no communication. Well, I think there needs to be communication.
Well, there can be communication share from the board members.
Was it happening?
You know, no, it's not happening.
We have, we've gone out there.
That's right. That's a fifty-fifty.
Fifty, giving their time and energy.
Well, but they need to, and that, that again, that's why. We're here tonight. No, I'm going to tell you that we're here tonight to address these. We're addressing these issues right now.
I understand, but I'm saying they're, they need help. They're asking for help and whether that's a director or something, it needs to be that y'all talk fifty percent, they talk fifty percent. They have no idea how to do that. You know, and I'm sure there's people that give their time and energy retirees and, and so on, but. I'm just saying there needs to be communication. I mean, it needs to be a format for communication. We appreciate you doing this, but. There does have to be a format somehow. You can't just say we're going to communicate and then it magically happens. Go up with a format.
Right. I would like to reiterate, we don't own the Portalis Senior Center. We own the building and that's it. The senior center is ran by the board itself. That's not something the city has anything to do with. With aging and long-term, yes. Yes. And as far as communicating, Joe and I have gone out there several times to meet with, with Ms. Sandra and Ms. Rita. As far as anybody else, they were invited to sit at the table and meet with us, but we are, we are genuinely trying and that's part of why we're having the town hall.
Chad, did you have some about the?
Just real quick on the director, this is probably gonna be a dumb question, but I want to ask this. So I'll get back on the same page. I'm part of a lot of board at the country club. You know, I see a lot of boards. Does the board at the senior citizen, do y'all elect a director? And then we just, and then we've been in the city except or do we hire a director for it? Based on, based on y'all's recommendation? How did, how was the director hired last time?
The city, it was the city staff.
It was a city staff, so.
If we pay for it, we have to do the hiring because they have to go through our hiring.
But you could take the board's recommendation because there would be, like, I, there would be no way I. Possibly be a director there because I don't know the problems. So you'd want to, you would want a recommendation with someone that goes there a lot.
Well, yeah, what I would take, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but I would think that we would include the board in the hiring process.
Okay, that's good. That's all my questions. I didn't know how that worked.
Can we, you know, if we were gonna, if we were gonna put out a flyer for a, or an ad for a director for the senior citizens there, then we would want some of the board members to sit on that.
Right.
On that, okay, on that hiring process.
Yeah, that, that was.
Yes.
Good question.
Anything else fresh on the mind? Yes, ma'am. The base for your meals? That, that is the bills. I'm sorry. I thought you said meals. The, the, the twenty-five thousand is set aside that we budget for the bills. Is that right?
Yes.
Utilities, including electricity and gas.
Yes.
And then. The city pays it. The city pays that.
Yes, we took care of that, ma'am. We took care of that. That was for the.
You're gonna pass due notice?
Yeah, no, no. It was for the fire alarm repair.
Oh.
Yeah. Yes, we took care of that, ma'am. Everything is, yeah. So here's everything that's paid by the city, Oscar.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Uh, next question. Are you aware? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say that last public works committee made, made meeting, uh, chairman, uh, Cudovas. Encourage her to bring this together and she's not able to come tonight and. I, and I think Mike, you was there when it's.
Is there?
Yeah, that day with all, uh, consensus that everybody at the public works committee, I mean, that we would sit down and have a. Civil discussion about this and I'm so proud of what's happening tonight. And I don't think we waste any time, do you, Mike? And I think this is productive. And this is continuous on, because this is what we envision that public works committee, bring the community together to bring some.
And, and, and this rally made an excellent point that, that we can talk about communicating and talk about. You know, getting together and doing it, but we need to, we need to strategize and make a plan of how we're gonna do that. And, and I'd like us to address that. And if we're meeting with some of the board members now. Then, then we need to continue that and then invite more of the members to come to that same meeting too. And then we can. Get those communication lines going.
Next question. Are you aware of the conditions of the Portalis Senior Center?
Think we heard all.
I think we heard that. So we can move on to the next one.
Go back to the needs.
So did.
That's the asking them.
Okay. So yeah, we did our, we've already done that too. We've early on. So, um, are you willing to help keep the building and program going?
I think that's an overwhelming yes.
It is very good.
And, and for all you folks that don't have a phone again, you know, that's a pretty easy question that you are willing to, you know, keep that thing going and, and be a part of it.
There it is.
So when we met with the, yeah, so when we met with the, uh, Ms. Sandra and them, these are some of the needs they told us was. Something that was on the radar for getting repaired or like they needed a freezer, the floor needed to be repaired. They wanted a director. So these are the items that we've already talked about with them. And we just wanted to share it with the community that these are the needs of the Portalis Senior Center right now. Yes, ma'am.
We don't need a volunteer director. We watch the city get out of it.
I do have volunteer. If anybody from the community wanted to step up and volunteer was an option. Uh, the city does not have it in their budget to have a director yet, but that's something that we can continue to work towards.
Well, at one time they did and they terminated the last director and did not be placed.
Yeah, and again, that's, you know, it's been, unfortunately, it's been a number of years.
Yep.
And, and that budgetary item probably went by the wayside. And so it's something that, that we need to work together to adjust that budget somewhat and find out what that, what that pay range is. But I have no idea what a director of a senior citizen makes. Yup. For my girls from. What was it? What, what would a director's salary be? Do you think?
Depend on, um.
Their expertise and their experience.
Depends on what the executive of them and the hours, it depends on the hours.
And the hours and such. Yes.
But you're looking at. Maybe fifty thousand a year.
Good. Yes.
I have a question. There are people talking about when the issue that now open standard and that would be and. I'm sorry. And then she, Joe come back out and had her sign, uh. An application to do a ICIP.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. It's not a loan. It's a grant. It's capital outlay funds. Yes.
But I thought you just got through saying that we had to apply for the grant.
We can apply for ICIP, but technically by you signing that, your organization applied for it. We just added it to our ICIP list.
Okay, it did not been in effect. So this right here says this one here is twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-nine.
So it's just a request. It does not mean that we got the grant yet. It's not a loan. It's an actual grant. Well, it's capital outlay funding that's given by the state.
That comes from the state legislators, Stuart Engel and Mr. Martin.
Zamora.
Zamora and those.
They go into session in January, so we usually find out sometime March, April, depends on how long their session is.
This hasn't been in effect.
No, ma'am. No.
But I think the, I think the operational side of the ICB is, is the government requires. All entities, municipalities put in a request under this form. Otherwise the funds cannot never be, uh, allocated if they're not on the, on the, on the, on the request. It's a budgetary wishlist. Hopefully that it get funded. If it's not on their wishlist and then the government will not even entertain a payment. So that's why it have to be on the list.
And that's why the years are, are set out there from twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Right.
We have to have, we have to have it so far in advance. That's correct. That's correct. That's right.
So it's, it's a, a continuing.
We have not asked, we have not had that on our ICIP, um. Wishlist before.
It's kind of a long-term plan. They have a plan and then back. It's kind of like streets can't be repaired during the pandemic.
Anyway.
Okay, so we do have the next. Slideshow says, let's brainstorm about how we can help Portalis Senior Center. Um, the city needs to be more involved with the center. Fundraising, um, somebody volunteered to bake bread. Yummy.
Where'd that come from?
People are saying this and stuff they can help fundraise and one.
You do that.
What?
I'm wondering if you do that.
I can make some bread. I can make some main, I can make some main banana bread. But I don't sell it cheap.
We, we, we don't need ours. I made some from salad. I think.
That's, that's pretty good. So those are types of things, though those fundraiser type things are, are things that I think we can all, all, all participate. Go ahead, sir.
Hire directors on there twice, writing grants is on there. Somebody still typing? Does anybody from the community have anything that, that's here live in person? Ways we can brainstorm about making sure that we can help the seniors center?
I've been on the board for a while. I know it's a lot for sale. But they're not huge. But they did an unbelievable job with the seniors. I read the secondary of exercise. We have nearly ten. They have. They have this, they have that. And I don't know how they set it up. We also have like five and six. I'm, there's something you can point out. Find out how it is, but it's still broken strong.
That's a great idea. I think that's a great idea to look at some of the. And, and a lot of times what we have to do, and I don't mean to cut you off, but what's a lot of times what we try to do is look at communities that are similar to our size. You know, like you said, I'm a gorgeous beard than us. Their tax base is larger. They have the air force base there right there too. They have a larger, uh, population of retirees that actually. Go there and, and, and a lot of people winter there. They have one of the, what I'm called, Snowbird.
The Snowbirds.
Somebody else wanted to ask a question. Yes, sir.
Yeah, she mentioned the size of. Um, the town, uh, according to the department down in New York. Four summer. They get forty-five thousand dollars a year for the senior citizens. And, and they have a director. I see. And also they, they got a, um, they're the same for many of them. This year this. They're here, they're staying there and it's not as old yet.
Well, and, and probably where that funding came from was through the same ICIP. Program that their, uh, their legislators had asked for in, in this, in this funding cycle. So when they got that and they were able to use it to remodel there.
Yeah.
Yes.
They have a director that doesn't come out of ICIP funds. And I, you know, I'll work there.
Sure.
So I need to box county all week long and then I come home with it. Both about county. Well, I'm a, I'm a dual county person and I was very surprised when I started trying to. You know, get my mother-in-law and my mom involved here. But because Barker County is so tiny and, and I think it's a great idea that we could go. Look at larger ones that are the same size, ones that are smaller and to see where they're getting the funding, where we could be creative and. You know, allocate some of those funds differently or maybe just, maybe sometimes it's the same funds and they go. So, but it is amazing that it's a small place and maybe that's probably, you mentioned earlier, like with me, we're, we're doing a community center and. And I've seen it want to happen now too. So maybe, maybe for a little bit bigger and it's a problem, but. There are some that I think is a great idea to go look around and get those ideas and communicate that so we can work together.
True. Mayor, we have a lot of, um, community services.
We do, uh, work with the long-term services department and we do administer several grants for the programs that we run at our center. Uh, we are not a senior center, although a lot of people who think we are, but, um. I really feel like aging long-term may have a grant available. And by applying for a grant, you can pay a director out of that grant. And again, that's, you know, it takes a lot of work. To administer these funds. You have to have a fiscal office. You have to, depending if, if you're a standalone entity and which I'm period or a five oh one three. So that takes a lot of. You have to take a lot of that into consideration when, uh, you're gonna have to run place. Uh, you have to go through audits. You have to go through, if you have. If you're making food in the center, you have to get health inspection. I mean, there's a lot that is involved. Other than just saying we're gonna hire a director and we're gonna, you know, a lot of rules to follow. So my suggestion would be let's look for a grant that would be able to hire the necessary staff. To, and to apply for. Year after year and hopefully, you know, if they can see the need and you can justify that need. Then, um, I have a big chance of getting someone. That would be my recommendation.
Very nice. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if the city has a grant writer that can help with writing grants? Oh, okay. Be, be available to help the board or. Okay.
Let me some of the.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're a member of Hepcog out of Clovis. Chad was reminding me and, and, and they have, they also have some access to some of those. Some of that expertise anyway and helping, helping write some.
Oh, anyone Eastern.
Yes, Eastern.
Yeah, universe. Yeah, for grant writers. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Yes, go ahead.
You know, we're available to, to operate as this as we can. You can do write grants all the, we're all the grant writers. We don't hire anybody else to do our grant writing stuff. We do have the experience. We have the contacts. So if you're, you know, wanting to meet, let's meet.
Well, and that, I think that's a great idea. We appreciate you reaching out and, and I think that that's what we need to understand is through that process. Like you said, we have to have, we have to have that board established and part of it. And then make sure that we know that you are a three, uh, five oh one, three C, uh, uh. Donation of both, what organization, what do you call it? Nonprofit, nonprofit organization. So.
Because, you know. Your board meetings have to be up to date. The minutes have to be sent even today. Uh, you have to, you know, that could go to a lot of reporting. It's just not as simple as saying we're just gonna operate the way we wish. You're gonna have to follow some rules. Yeah, but, um, it's there.
Right. And, and, and I appreciate that. And, and that's something that, you know, the, the city can look at adjusting our budget somewhat. But we're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to adjust it to where. The complete needs are going to be that. You know, with the, with the vans and with the director and those type things that, that we, that we'd like to do, you know, but. I mean, we could look at it. That's for sure.
Well, here's another thing with transportation. I know the. They do have, they do have funding in the area agency on eighty, eighty long-term services department, which does provide free transportation to. Uh, sixty and older. And you're, you're, it's not based on income. It's based on age and need. So there, there's another alternative rather than having to be in the patch. Because I hear a lot of, um. I, you know, they can't pick me up. I have to call so many days in advance. I mean, there's all these barriers that people are facing. So here's the alternative. Do we have, I thought I saw somebody from the top of here. Maybe listening, I mean, she's, she is the, uh.
Can you enlighten us a little bit on the, on their, uh, bus, on their transportation? Yes, ma'am.
We offer, uh, we offer transportation by native rate. We can, for medical, they can adjust our times generally from nine to four. Um, we can offer same-day service. We do have to, because we do get our funding through the non-metro area agency on aging. Uh, we do have to complete in the September. It takes five minutes for us to do that and get them submitted to the state for approval. Uh, we can, we can take any senior sixty or older. Uh, if they're, and if they use a cane or a wheelchair, we've got a lift. Uh, we do have same-day service available. Of course, if it's a medical appointment, I was best to plan in advance so that we've got that, uh, blocked in. And yeah, we wouldn't have any problem at all in, in getting seniors out there on Thursdays or any day of the week.
And you pick them up at the facility?
Very nice.
Okay.
And because Portalis is a smaller area, our, our, our Portalis transport isn't, isn't, um, they're usually not extremely busy.
That, that's, that's partial that's available. I think, you know, one of the, one of the other things that I know that the, the senior citizens vans. Used to run where, where they would, they would do, I, I guess, kind of expeditions where y'all would get ten or twelve of you and knew you wanted to go. where y'all would get ten or twelve of you and knew you wanted to go say to Ria Dosa or something for the day. And then you'd go on a little day trip or something. Oh, I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure they did.
No, there's no effort. So you just, it's just regular, you're you're a regular driver.
I could drive one, yeah. No, I can't. Even at school, but well, my license is restricted to. Yes, ma'am.
Most of my questions have been answered already. But I would just like to say that um, just by looking and, you know, listening to people around here, most of you have been residents forever. I'm new. I had a really hard time finding things. Deciphering what was where, who was open, what days. It was a, it was kind of a disaster. I ended up. And then um, my daughter kidnapped me and took me lunch today. And I did not know it was a, a potluck. I did not know it wasn't a funded meal. Um, you know, there was a lot, I had many, many questions. But I mean, most of it had been answered, but we need to, I don't know, advertise, is that possible?
Sure.
Update the website, put up flyers, something.
I think those are great ideas. And I think that that's something that 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 the city and the board of the Senior Citizen Center can work together on on fixing some of those communication things. We, we could put more information on our website. We can put more information on our Facebook page. We could put more information on there. I don't like TikTok, but whatever. Anyway. Yes, ma'am. You have a flyer? Where's that flyer location? At the Senior Citizen Center?
It's on the wall.
At the senior, where, where can we put that? At the wall at City Hall?
We can also share it everywhere too. We can share it everywhere too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great. You know, that's great. I mean, those are the type things that that the lady in the mat was not aware of. I wouldn't wear. Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious, know what form of communication works best because because we can put things on the social media, but if they're not on social media, we're not.
What would work best for you guys? Right.
But like, where would you have one of them? Like, where would be a place that you can see it and actually be able to know it back?
We put them at churches?
Churches, doctors' office.
Office, library.
Do y'all have a newsletter that goes out?
No.
I know some of the boards, some of the boards I've belonged or belong to have been a part of. There's always a news, a monthly newsletter that gives you calendar dates for that whole month.
We go to peanut festival and that's who we are and what we do.
Yeah.
We'll be out there seven, nine and one. So maybe somebody or somebody senior center needs to go out there and.
Yeah, and if we can't put it together for this quick, but that's something to definitely plan for. And different, different activities too. The same thing that that, you know, I mean, we've got a parade coming up this weekend. We have parades every few months. I, you know, I'd love to try to help, you know, have a small float for the Senior Citizen Center and and those type things. We can, you know, have a banner made and and I think, I think the bank would actually even help pay for a banner for the senior citizen. I'm not volunteer David Stone's money, but I guess I will. Yes, sir.
We did have a booth at the peanut festival a year.
Mm hmm.
And we also had a booth at the fair. But we had about five people that were willing to come out regularly and kick in and help. So that's why a part of them got tired, a part of them passed away and now we just, we don't have any.
And 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 unfortunately, that's kind of part of the whole deal. You know, you get people excited about being a part of it and they're there for a few weeks. They're there for a few months. They kind of get tired, they get dwindling down, the numbers start changing. Your board members change and and then, you know, it it's hard to keep, keep rolling ups all the time. So understand, yes, ma'am. Yeah, easy to fall in. Just more. Yeah, that's right. That's right. I'm right there. You got anything else?
No, we have questions. First question is, why hasn't the city gotten involved before now? Um, the city has been involved with what they could. Um, when I learned that there was the issues that they were, Joe and I started reaching out with staff and council to let them know that we have an issue. So we are improving in that area. What will change moving forward? Um, tonight, we learned that we can do better with our communication, which we will be reaching out to everybody. And we will be working towards our stakeholders and getting with other people that can help us write grants and see what we can do to get the senior center back to where it was before. I do want to speak on behalf of the bus. I I did learn that we the city took away the bus because the interns wouldn't cover it for non-city employees to drive it. So that's why the bus is not there anymore. Um, but Pats does offer free rides as well. I know it's a little more challenging, but it sounds like La Casa has a little bit of an easier time for getting to seniors' rides. What educational material assistance can be given to seniors or the board or the center to assist with their needs moving forward? Um, I'm going to reach out to the community services director and see what we can do to get some of that information and then we will have a meeting with the board and let the board set it up with the community or the members to come in as well. And we will have a little bit of a forum going with that.
I wish you'd do through the NMU with that grant writing part too. They do excellent fundraising.
And I don't mind reaching out to NMU, Community Services. We have Joe now. We'll include everybody that's willing to come. Where is the funding for the new director position going to come from? Uh, well, we did learn that there is monies in a grant to get that. So that's something that we're definitely going to be looking into. If the city owns the building, why did, is, why is it not being maintained accordingly? It's being maintained with the funds that we have and uh, before now, we didn't know that there were the issues that needed to be done. Um, we are learning about that and we're going to make that right going forward. Why did the city take the bus and computers? I'm not sure about the computers. I do know I did learn about the buses and why the bus was taken. I can't speak on the computers. That's not something that I knew about before tonight, but I'm definitely going to look into that. Will the city replace what was removed from the center? We cannot replace the bus if we took the computers and we weren't supposed to and that was bought by the senior center monies. We will look at replacing that. Uh, but at this time, I I can't get more information than that because I don't have it.
Can I ask you a question? Who mentioned the library up there? And 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 do you have a library in conjunction with the computer center or is it computer center in a different room?
Oh, different, it's different.
It's different. We can, we have, but there is room out there to set up a little computer center. If we had two or three, if we had two or three monitors or.
And Chad's idea about the newsletter, I would more than pass you hope with that because I had asked to have a board meeting announced from here. I hear about it after the fact because they don't have one about about two or three times a year. I made it there with a newsletter where there were things offered. Uh, there were ideas uh, offered. There were invitations to give, to put, have input. I think we would get more people involved. But I've been discouraged. I've tried to have workshops. I've tried to have uh, uh, art programs of, I've tried to do several different things. And I, I just got nowhere with the last president now. Sandra's special. She, she doesn't, she doesn't speak that much and she's really good.
You know, that's, that's, you know, that's a great.
Work together.
That's right.
We need more.
Yes.
Asking Sandra to take over this.
Yes, ma'am.
And you do this, or ask you all to do this. When, if we had the newsletter and we had people uh, actually invited to participate and put, have input, I think we could.
And that's why it's important, that's why it's important to have any.
Vice chairs and show have been important because they've been having input over the last six months. And we've appreciated the fact that they have, um, several times.
Thank you.
And they've been very open to hearing what we have.
And it's important about having an involved board.
Yeah.
Next.
I think just real quick, wanted there some clarification on why it's difficult for the Pat Bus to service the needs of these folks when they're housed in that building. That does, that seems like that'd be the easiest place in the world for them to take people.
Well, the Pat's Bus. Right, understandable. The Pat's Bus is funded by a grant through the federal, um, the NMDOT gives them a grant fund and the city matches a portion of that. Their programs, the fifty-three eleven program, and what they have to do is service the entire community. And they have to call and schedule a ride. That is how the Pat's Bus works. It's by schedule. Every thirty minutes, they can pick somebody up and drop them off. So the, the hard part is getting on the schedule. They try to do same day accommodation, but it's, it's first come, first served and they have two drivers and that's all they have. Um, we do have an opening if anybody wants to come drive for us. Um, yes, Oscar. Um, so that's the, the other need is getting the drivers. We did get a new bus. So we are, we are, we have our buses. We just need, we need drivers that have the time to come and help out. So.
Schedulally thing, Mike. Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, sure. Anyway. So that wraps it up, guys. I, you know, I, I really think, Sarah, you want to wrap it up and and I'll say a couple of things.
Yes.
Other than that.
So we, we are hearing your needs. We're going to work towards those needs. I apologize for you thinking that we wanted to have this meeting to shut you down. That was not our goal. Our goal was to figure out how we can come together as a community to keep the entire program going and to get more involvement and more members into your program. And everything that we talked about tonight was great. It's, it's going to be a slow process, but I promise you, we're going to work towards it. And I let my number out there to everybody. Ms. Sandra, everybody has it. If you guys have any, any concerns or issues, call me if I don't answer. Leave a message. I will call you back.
When's that potluck on Thursdays? So I missed it today.
You went one day too early.
Should have waited and went today. Anyway. But I, I challenge us all to participate a little bit more on going out to those type things too. Was a potluck cost three bucks, five bucks, five dollar? If I bring a dish, it's free. About one of the banana nut breads. Just pay the five dollars for it. Anyway, hey, I appreciate everybody coming out.
Thank you.
And rest assured, we're not trying to close that thing down. We, we want our senior citizens to have a facility to be proud of and we want to be proud of it too. But we didn't know the issue, but now we're learning the issues and I, and I think we're going to address, I know we're going to address them. And 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 start climbing that hill. We might, we might falter a little bit, but we're going to keep climbing. All right, Mike, this is, uh, please, uh, whoever can do it, give us a path that the citizens of Portales can donate some money to the senior citizens. I, I don't think the residents of this town are going to let the seniors uh, be needing for anything if they have a way to help. And some of these areas, electricians and floor workers and all this, I guarantee you, there's people in this town that will donate your time. Possibly donate some materials or at least give those materials for cost. It'd be up to the city or whoever, how to get through all the red tape of government. But as far as the people of this community, they're not going to let the seniors down, but you got to clear the weeds out.
Yeah.
So that money can flow. That's the trick. That's the trick. Thanks, Mike. That's great point.
Thank you.
Anyway. Thanks, everybody, for being here. Have a good rest.